Call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you call a roll, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Hood.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mr. Mayo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Counsel, I'm sure you want to join me and many of you all who are viewing. First of all, let me say good evening to those of you who are here and those of you who are viewing. Just want to say thank you to all of our -- you'll hear us talk about partnerships all the time and to our citizens. I'm sure you heard the big announcement today about Danville's baseball team being called the Auto Box. And I've talked to Austin, and he wanted me to share, along with counsel, to all of you all who teamed in and came up with this name and sent everything in. We're real excited, just to let you know that first game is going to be on June the 3rd, and we're looking forward to it. But again, just want to pause before we go into our invocation to say to all of our citizens, everybody who participated in that, not only we're pleased, Austin is very pleased, and it turned out very well. We'll have our invocation by J. Lee Vogler, followed by a pledge of allegiance. If you will all stand, please.
Lord, we come to you tonight as we've been through a time of darkness and at a time of pain and illness and suffering for so many Americans and so many throughout the world. But, Lord, as we come through that, we now see a light at the end of that tunnel. We see a better future in front of us. We see better days ahead. We see that sunrise on the horizon. Lord, help us as we continue to move forward through the next several days, next several weeks, and several months, as we are able to return to see our family members, our friends, our neighbors, in a way that we've become accustomed to over the years, Lord, as we get closer and closer to that day. We see the better days ahead. We speak it, we believe it, and we will receive it. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have our announcements. It's Ms. Evelina Ross, Pennsylvania County Community Action. We're going to ask her to come forward. And any of her board members here, if you'd like to come forward as well. Ms. Evelina is doing wonderful things, her and her board, and she reaches out to me all the time. It's finally get a chance to fellowship. Good evening to you both.
Good evening. I'm not Evelina Ross. I'm Greg Harrison, the Chair of the Pennsylvania County Community Action Board. And to the Mayor Jones and the rest of the members of council and to city staff, we thank you for inviting us here this afternoon, this evening, and appreciate the time to give you an update on the 2020 Community Needs Assessment. On behalf of the board, again, we said thank you. I have a day job, so I'm not going to give this report. Ms. Ross is going to give that report and answer any questions that you may have. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms., our Executive Director, Ms. Evelina Ross.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Honorable Jones, it is so good to be here with you all. I'm Evelina Ross. This has just been said, Director of Pennsylvania County. You met my boss now. I would like to take a few moments to recognize a few good people that I know here. Of course, I cannot overlook the honorable Mayor, former Mayor Sherman Saunders, who was my boss, who hired me into Pennsylvania County Community Action, and who's taught me what I know. I cannot overlook Mr. Barry Mayo, who you all appointed to serve on my board, and he's already given me directions. So thank you all so very much. Thank you for meeting with me tonight, and my purpose is to update you on the great works that Pennsylvania County Community Action is doing for our citizens of our area and to adjust the community needs assessment. I know that most of you know about a community needs assessment, but our board, through the Virginia Association of Community Action, has directed that community actions do a community needs assessment every three years to find out what the needs are in the community and to find out from the service area that we serve with our partners what they can do to help us as we provide services for our clients. So this, you each have a copy of the latest community needs assessment. However, it's just focusing on PCCA, and then it's only for Danville. Again, I'll give you the information from Henry County for Pennsylvania County. We will be meeting with them to discuss that. Again, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. These results were, as a result of the Robert Woods Johnson Foundation, the Annie Casey Kids Count, the Census Bureau, and from community leaders from all the areas. Pennsylvania County Community Needs Assessment acknowledges the input, again, from all these areas. So that's why we do this community needs assessment. We have compiled it, and tonight I would just like to share it with you. Because I know I only have five minutes, I did pages one and four. We'll give you just the content, the methodology, the remainder of reflective information that I wanted to discuss tonight. With the budget cuts for program year 2019, 2020, along with the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic that has changed all of our lives in one way or another, as well as with the social and political issues that occurred in 2019 and 20, PCCA still managed to provide, and you will hear me say PCCA, Pennsylvania County Community Action, provide services to 7,751 unduplicated clients this program year. For the city of Danville, we provided 1,261 households with a participant total of 21, 16 persons. Today, these services continue from all the service area, and PCCA is in a position to be able to provide these services with your continued help and support. Danville is seeing or witnessing a rising opportunity. We all know that. This community has created economic opportunity with new industries, entrepreneurship options, housing in the River District, and restaurants that provide better access to healthy food. But this is not true for everyone. PCCA's community needs assessment revealed that there is a percentage of the population that is still facing a deep pervasive struggle with lifting themselves out of poverty. Poverty is a growing threat to our South Side that we must address, and PCCA wants to be a party in addressing that. We learned from our surveys and data collected that the top needs in Danville, and you will find that in the booklet, were housing, healthcare, employment, and food. Another finding is that Danville has the second highest percentage of children living in poverty in the Commonwealth of Virginia, according to Kids Count 2018, and childcare is a major concern. Access to decent and affordable housing is another issue facing many Americans across the county, and it's also an issue in our community. Homelessness is a major problem that hopefully we can work together to find a way to identify a way to combat this homelessness. The local homeownership rate lags behind the state. Homeownership rates for Danville residents is 53%, while the state average is 64%. Just as troubling is the residents are paying a higher cost to maintain their homes. And I think most of you know with COVID, with the jobs, there were lots of people that could not pay their rent, could not pay their utilities. In just a few minutes, I'll share how PCCA helped that problem. It also shows that communities with the poorest health also have high poverty. The data shows the link between poverty and race. Communities of color are experiencing poverty and unemployment at a higher rate. I want to share with you what PCCA and my boss is telling me that we are going to do in some ways, that we can intend to continue to address the needs of addressing the issues that face our community today. Most of you already know, as Mr. Saunders was a former Executive Director, that we operate now nine major programs, along with eight minor programs, assisting with rental assistance, utility payments, a senior program that provides healthy meals, along with addressing health and socialization concerns. 10% of the population of the city of Danville is currently being served by Pennsylvania County Community Action, paying over $81,224 to the city of Danville for utilities since 2019, 2020, and $24,318 to keep Danville residents in their rental homes for program year 2019 and 2020. From July 1, 2020 until February 21, PCCA had paid the city of Danville $120,000, $120, $189.86 in utility payments, and $26,626.93 in rental assistance. PCCA placed 31, Mr. Mayor would love to hear this, 31 returning citizens in top-paying jobs because of the growth in Danville. 31 returning citizens. That's in one year. And 27 of those citizens were residents of Danville, Virginia. With more financial assistance, PCCA could serve more citizens. The Virginia Income Tax Assistance Program has already filed 75, has already filed 75 taxes by EFO. Moving forward, here are some ways that we are hoping that we can continue to work together. PCCA is positioned to be a leader to address many of these issues by bringing together different organizations that lead a conversation on poverty, applying equity lend to employment strategies to be sure that we are addressing specific barriers for specific population than just one model fit all. Increasing income is a primary way to decrease poverty. I think we all will agree to that. The unemployment rate has doubled since COVID-19, and though, although COVID is lifting, thank the Lord, there are still opportunities, and different communities continue to face different challenges and barriers that will require specific strategies. PCCA plans to create a more targeted approach and effort to address these barriers differently based on what the client's needs are. Advocate for decent and affordable quality housing for all. We are currently serving a number of residents through our weatherization programs, reducing cost burdens through the weatherization measures. Since COVID-19, PCCA has received 25 calls from citizens who either do not have a place to live or need someplace to live. So we're working with the local organizations to try to find some temporary location to house these folks. We want to create a more outreach program that delivers services in communities with high rates of poverty. There are neighborhoods that experience in high rates of poverty, partnering with other neighborhoods-based organizations to make it easier for residents to take advantages of the opportunities that exist. Some don't know. Continue to provide financial literacy and free tax preps in communities that need it most. Addressing child poverty by delivering the two-generational approach that will help the children, parents, and grandchildren. Our Stella program, like Head Start Office, an opportunity to address both children and parents. As we think of our programming opportunities, we like to look at strategies that impact the child, the parent, the grandparent, and the family. Deliver teen recreation and work programs to address violent crimes and delinquency. There are opportunities for teen workforce programs, like the summer employment program, that we believe can have a positive impact on our children by giving them a purpose and putting money in their pockets of the families. Now, this would take a lot of work. We have to work with the existing Workforce Innovation Opportunity Action program. We will need to work with the city of Danville. We will need to work with Danville Community College, the Chamber of Commerce. I would love very much to re-instill the Job Shattering Program that I remember Mr. Saunders probably remembers and Mr. Mayor remembers, that was a successful program. You might remember that was instituted by Colin Powell. So that would give children an opportunity to see the different kinds of positions that are out there. Now, with the onset poverty of COVID-19, poverty affecting those that are underrepresented, and they are still further behind. Gaps in education and income are why we're addressing that. PCCA is positioned to take the lead on many of these issues. There are, these are ambitious goals, and I believe that if we can achieve, that we can achieve them. If we work together, if we combine our resources, if we partner on boards, that we can get this community on the level. PCCA is ready to work with you to do whatever it is we can do. We have a long relationship, as he said. We just want to continue that. We thank you for your attention. What can you do for us? Like we said, let us work with you. Financial assistance, income contributions would be, we want to have a big building in the center of town that says Pennsylvania County Community Action. We've been a longtime partner. We look forward to a continued relationship. Thank you so very much. Mr. Harrison and I are here to answer any questions.
Let me first of all say to Councilman Saunders, thank you for all the work that you gave to this program, as was stated. I appreciate you sharing, and he's still continuing to give. Ms. Ross, your presentation and Mr. Harrison has really touched me in many ways. Something you said in your report, if you can go back, and how many calls did you state that you have received from folks needing somewhere to live? And the reason that I ask you that is, last council meeting, we had a discussion that Councilman Buckner brought out in regards to homelessness and finding homes for people in our community. How many calls have you received, as you stated in your report, of people looking for somewhere to live?
25.
And these 25 calls that you received came in when? I'm just trying to paint a picture of how important it is, the work that you all are doing, and how important it is for us to get involved for people who are really having some tough times. So these calls came in when?
These calls have come in--
Talk into the microphone, please.
So sorry. Oh, mask back on. These calls have come in, I know, since January, because that's when I start keeping record of the call, their names, the people and their families, and the agencies that we're working with to try to find them a place to live.
I'm going to yield to other council members, but it was, you gave an excellent report, but it's a sad report because the poverty rate is 21%, but the child poverty rate is 31%. Councilman Campbell.
Mayor took some of my thunder, but I just wanted to say to you, Ms. Ross, I appreciate the work that you serve in Pennsylvania County and Danville. I know a lot of the work and for your staff. I just want to commend you, and whatever we can do to support, I'll do it 100%. Just want to say thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilman Mayo.
Ms. Ross, as Councilman Campbell said, and we all feeling the same thing that you just presented, and of course, being an employee there before, and it's dear to my heart, just, all the things that you touched, it's been across the table, some of it's been across the table, and we're with you. And I do believe that we can find a way to work together and continue to work together because Pennsylvania County Community Action, I like to call it Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Action--
That's what we think of it.
--because we all are together.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayo, that building that she wants in the middle of Danville, that's what it will be called.
And this gentleman sitting across from me. It's not enough time to just give him all the props that he deserves, and he continues to work within the community, representing not only Danville but the community action. So keep doing what you're doing, and Mr. Harrison, the same thing to you, too.
Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, thank you, Ms. Ross. Thank you, Attorney Harrison as well, and your board and your staff for all that you do. I think everybody knows that Community Action is very important to me. It started August 1964 under the Economic Act. Signed by President Lyndon B. Johnson. And in terms of destiny, Mr. Mayor, when President Johnson signed that into federal law on August 20th, August 20th is my birthday. And so I'm very pleased to honor him and our nation in trying to help people, and thank you again, Ms. Ross, and your staff, and Mr. Harrison, your board, for continuing the efforts to help people. And with regards to the homeless issue, Mr. Mayor, later on, I have some thoughts I want to share with you, and Ms. Ross and our manager.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else? Is, Mr. Harrison, is there any more of your board members here you'd like to recognize?
That's my mayor.
Well, again, thank you all so much for all the work that you're doing. You brought an excellent report, and it's a lot on our mind, 25 calls that you received from January. We're just in March, and you have to think about, I see our superintendent is here, and some of the persons from our school division, you have to think about how many young people associated with those 25 calls. So thank you so much for all the work that you're doing, and always welcome to come back here again, and it's good to see you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Communications for visitors. Any visitor who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Any citizen who would like to speak on any item not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Gus Dyer, and I live at 119 Fox Holla Drive in the city of Danville. I have a degree from Virginia Tech in Environmental and Urban Systems. I've been involved in commercial real estate development in the city of Danville for the last 39 years, and I am currently Chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals. This evening, at your work session, you're going to begin the process of creating a new zoning category for the casino and school field. And so you all will have this memorandum, if you haven't already seen it. And it's mostly fine. I didn't mean to make you upset, Doug. But there were just a couple of things on here that I think maybe you all should take special consideration of before we begin this process. I know a lot of times what happens is the process gets started and things sort of get determined before the public actually gets the opportunity to speak on them. And so, under the heading of buildings, there's a comment about maximum building height. Architectural elements, should it be capped at the height of the smokestacks? And while I appreciate the iconic nature of the smokestacks, I feel like that this is sort of an arbitrary restriction on this project before it gets started. You know, you have an 80-acre site, and I would say that there are plenty of places on that site where you could build a structure higher than the smokestacks that would not negatively impact the smokestacks. And so what I might suggest is that you have a tiered deal where, like, if you're 20 feet away from the smokestacks, you can go 20 feet, 100 feet away, you can go 100 feet, and that way you can preserve the architectural and the historic nature of the smokestacks. I mean, I remember when smoke used to come out of those smokestacks. I appreciate that. All right, so minimum yard requirements. It says yard setback similar to an industrial development. And I really don't understand that because I can't think of any two things that are more diametrically opposed than a casino and a factory. I mean, you want public interface with the casino. You do not want public interface with a factory. I know particularly along the West Main Street area and along Bishop Avenue, across from where the ballpark used to be, that if you hope to get maximum value out of that property, which is owned by the IDA, that you want to integrate those parcels with the casino. And so I would think that urban streetscape sort of deal along West Main Street, much like what Caesars has in their preliminary design work, that that would probably be more preferable than to have a football-field-sized parking lot and then some type of screening separating them. And so I think that that ought to be considered. And then on architectural materials, of course, you know, natural steel, stone, glass, that's more preferable than plastic and synthetic stucco. So I'd like to make that point. On the signage, I know that our planning staff thinks that our signage ordinance is fantastic. I can tell you, as Chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals, it's probably the most common issue we have to deal with. There are major national corporations that come to Danville and find out that the signs that they can put anywhere else in the city, I mean, anywhere else in the country, they come to Danville and they find out that they don't meet our sign ordinance. And so what I would suggest is maybe that you let Caesars decide what they want to do and then work your sign ordinance around it. Other than that, you know, it's a good plan, and I look forward to seeing what you all come up with.
Thank you so much for your service to--
As one more comment, totally off topic, that Saturday, I received my second COVID shot, thanks to the city of Danville. Because I was on the aforementioned Board of Zoning Appeals, I was offered the opportunity to get a shot, and so I took advantage of that. And so I'm looking forward to everybody else getting their shot. It's nothing to it. So I encourage everybody to get that shot. And I just want to thank the city and council and everybody who was responsible for that. They couldn't have been more professional and more courteous, and the people were great. So I just want to give that big shout out.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that. Also, we have a question for you, if you want to come back, Mr. Dyer. I think Councilman Vogler has a question for you. But also, I want to thank you for your service on the chair, serving on the zoning appeals. Thank you for that. Councilman Vogler.
Well, not necessarily a question. I just wanted to say, you're preaching in the choir with me. I agree with you on a number of the things you said, and I will be bringing up some of the points you mentioned as far as the casino and school field, but with the sign ordinances and stuff, again, I'm with you 100%. I've been talking that for a long, long time down here and hopefully won't have to talk about it much longer because it needs to be updated, it needs to be fixed. And I've heard that story that you talked about from numerous people for a long time. So those regulations, restrictions, need to be fixed and updated and more business-friendly. So I'm with you.
We have another case on Thursday that we're going to have to decide on. So I'm with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Communications from visitors. Any visitor who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Any citizen who would like to speak on any item not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Under meeting minutes, counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from our last meeting, from our regular council meeting held on February 16, 2021.
Second by Councilman Campbell, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Aye.
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 may come forward at this time. We're still in public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Let me try one more time. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Is there a motion? Councilman Buckner.
May I, I think we should, is there any way we could table this?
That's your motion?
For further discussion?
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to table.
There's a motion on the floor to table it. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Campbell. Mr. Attorney, I yield to you. Turn your mic on. Your microphone is still not on, I don't think. Sue, is his microphone on?
Says it's on.
There you go.
I just wanted to clarify whether it was a postponement for an indefinite period of time or for a definite period of time, like to the next meeting or whatever.
Just like a time for us to all have a few more minutes to discuss it in a work session. So I wouldn't say the next one, but.
So I think the proper motion is a postponement for an indefinite period of time, and then you can always bring it back.
Sounds great.
Councilman Vogler.
My question would be then, it appears we were about to be at a point where nobody made a motion period in which it would pass by. What is the difference between that and what Councilman Buckner is recommending? Could it not come back either way?
I think it could come back, but this way, what he's doing is suggesting, I think he's tying the ability to discuss it further to the motion.
May I ask, Councilman Buckner, what other discussion with it do you want to have?
I'd like to see if we could get a little bit more in line with what everybody else in the region is doing. Instead of just going 100%, waving it 100%, I think we should maybe discuss what Roanoke's doing and see if that helps us more, helps them more, just to discuss it and figure out where we need to be with it.
Mr. Mayor, not to interrupt, but we probably need a second on the floor to continue discussion.
I think we got a second from Dr. Miller.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, I was talking to you. I think this also gives us a time for the city manager to take our questions back to Goodwill, but it's, counsel, we got a motion on the floor, we got a second, we in discussion. Is there any more discussion on this item? Councilman Vogler, were your questions answered?
Yeah, I believe so. I think the answer that we just got a few minutes ago, I don't remember that being discussed in the previous meeting. So I think it's important to know that it's not the same across the board and other localities. And so I do think Councilman Buckner brings up a good point in terms of discussing what example we might want to pattern ourselves after. But I think just wiping the slate clean might not be the best way forward. So I'm fine with the motion.
Sounds good. Anyone else? Dr. Miller. Turn your microphone on, please.
I had, I bet. Yeah, I had concerns. You know, I know they promised, the lady promised a lot of things they would do in the future to work with the community, but we just heard an excellent presentation from Pennsylvania County Community Action, what they are doing. And I just had concerns. We had a lot of promises, but we didn't see any, I don't know, I almost got the feeling I'd rather see them have some solid proposals or action or committed to things, not just say, well, we'll do this and we'll do that with the youth and teaching. They have a lot of assets. If you look at their portfolio, millions of dollars, 18 million in land and all this, and I'm not sure why they need a $9,000 discount for real estate unless they're truly interacting community and we're getting that benefit back from them. So I had real reservations and would have probably voted against it tonight.
Sounds good. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell.
Question, we vote on postponement?
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler. Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, just as a footnote to that, when you do take up the proposal, in order to grant any kind of tax exemption status, it will require six affirmative votes from council. A simple majority will not do it.
Sounds good. And thank you so much, Mr. Attorney, for all you do. And Dr. Miller, thank you for your point, because I feel the same way. I hope they take some of these points back with them and start implementing programs for our young people and not waiting for the tax break to implement those programs, because we need these programs right away. On item B, consideration of expanding the services of the Halifax Pennsylvania Court Service Program. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
May I like to make a motion that we approve a resolution approving and authorizing the Comprehensive Community Corrections Act for local responsible offenders and the Parental Services Act.
Second by Councilman Vogler, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Under communications, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to encourage our citizens to sign up for the vaccine. As many of you are aware, the JCPenney site, the former JCPenney site at the Danville Mall is now a community vaccination clinic that is run by the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and it's staffed by contractors from that group. They are vaccinating, their goal is to vaccinate up to 3,000 people per day. They've had a little bit of a slow ramp up the past couple of days. Yesterday was their first day. Today, I went there and things were very smooth. People didn't wait in line very long, and they were getting people vaccinated pretty quickly. The way you can get a vaccine is you've got to do one of two things. You've got to go online at vaccinate.virginia.gov or call 1-877-VACX-N-V-A, V-A-X-I-N-V-A. And I'll ask Mark Aaron if he can put the digits on that, on the comment feed. That would help people, if they can't use the internet or don't have the internet, that's how they can sign up. I've been over at the, as many people know in the community, the city helped facilitate using the JCPenney site for two volunteer-run vaccination clinics that were held by the Virginia Department of Health, the local Virginia Department of Health, SOVA Health, Averit University, the city of Danville, Pennsylvania County, with volunteer support from nurses in both the college programs at Averit and at DCC, and multiple volunteers from throughout our community. And we ran a very smooth operation and were able to show the state that it's possible to vaccinate lots of people at that site. And on Monday, the group came in, they actually had to set up, I was there Friday night, there were dozens of people, 18-wheelers, unloading equipment, setting up the site, getting ready for Monday. Monday, they started, they had a little bit of a learning curve to begin with, but they've really corrected that in the time since then, and I think there's still room for improvement. And obviously, I think that's what everybody should be doing every day. You should be doing a little better than the day before. I firmly believe that in everything that I do, and I'm sure that they do as well. So I just want to encourage people to get online, go to vaccinate.virginia.gov and sign up. I will tell you that I received this morning a text inviting me to get a vaccine at the site. They did not know that I already had a vaccine, but that's okay. I was glad to get that. I walked myself through the process of registration just to see what it's like. It didn't take long to do it. I did not get myself an appointment because I didn't need one, so I stopped short of doing that. But it's a fairly easy process. There's a few things they could do to tweak it, make it better, but that's fine. And I think that people will find that it's a great way to get in and get out, get vaccinated. 3,000 people per day in Danville for the next possibly 60 to 90 days. And we're bringing people in from an hour and a half away, but it's very convenient to people in our community. So I hope that people in Danville, Pennsylvania County, take advantage of the opportunity to get a vaccine. They've got plenty. There's more than enough to go around for people who want it. And I will say that I did walk around this afternoon at about 4:00 and spoke to some folks who were getting a vaccine, and spoke to some who had already received a vaccine, and asked them about their experience today. And both people that I talked to, it was a couple and one other person, said that their experience was good and that they were happy to have a vaccine. And they actually had a lot, one of them had a lot of questions about Danville that I was able to help answer. So they were from out of town. I see some questions, so I'll be happy to try to answer some, or maybe this is comments.
Dr. Miller.
Just a comment. I commend the hospital, the city, and Averit, the way they ran, you all set the example. I almost wish they'd given us the money in the vaccine, and we could have done it good or better. But be as it may, they are bringing a lot of people into Danville, and this is for the whole South Side and Southwest. I mean, a lady from Radford was coming today. So this is the big site in this end of the state. So it's a shot in the arm for Danville's economy, too, bringing all these people. So again, I want to commend the way the city handled this and the hospital, and the way you ran your example on volunteers. So, good job.
And we're offering the support and help that we can to make it as smooth as possible.
I also got a call today. I don't know if the young lady is here, Tommy. Got a call today where the young ladies, they're going to be helping people sign up. And also, when we were there Monday, they talked about the economics for Danville, the number of people they're hiring in our community. And so the call that I got today was that they're going to be hiring, and we're going to try to get that website up on our site as well. So there's a lot going on.
The person I sat in at the beginning of the day and at a desk next to somebody who was registering people just to see what the process was like, and I asked the young lady, she said she's from Danville, she was happy to get a job, she was excited about working there and helping the community. And so it was nice to hear. And she said that a lot of the people that were doing registration were folks that lived here.
And I think their pay is very, very good.
Very good.
Thank you so much, Ken. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Deputy city manager, anything? Thank you, sir. City attorney?
Yes, sir. I am happy to report that Lighthouse, who came to rent a building from the IDA, is no longer a renter. Today, they bought the building.
Standing.
And they paid more for the building than the IDA ultimately paid and improved, so we may have made a dime or two on it. So they are here for the long haul.
That's great. And they're hiring as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes, thank you. Just want to give a shout out to the Danville Police Department for their awards ceremony, and to Deputy Chief Dean Harrison and the chief booth and staff. Congratulations. I really enjoyed myself on that occasion, and it was a treat to see the officers get numerous awards, and also some of their partners from different categories such as lifesaving crew and some of the city officials. So that was something that was very, very good, and you keep doing the good work. So give chief our regards on that. Good to see you, Mrs. Ross, again, PCCA. We definitely hear a lot of what you're trying to do and what you have done through the years. Speaking on the reentry, which is so dear to my heart, I did have a call yesterday on a gentleman who just served time in getting out, and he was homeless, and he only had a week staying in a local hotel, and we were trying to help get him some services. So as you see, our council members see the need of homelessness, but we also see the need that we have people coming out of institutions and prisons who also need places to stay. And this is an ongoing thing, so we're hoping to pull all this together. I think we're going to be able to do this. I had an opportunity to see the COVID center over at JCPenney's, and it is good to see that not only that you see citizens throughout the area in the Southwest region, but Danville getting this big boost to get the COVID shot. And we want to keep encouraging others to come out and do that and get the shot if you haven't got it, because it does help change things. And we're just going to keep that encouragement going. And I want to give a finalist to Danville Community College, who has a MFGTM National Challenge, which is a lot of trades and short-term career trade programs that a lot of our students at DCC are being finalists at it. And it's going to take place March 15th, well, it may have already, but they had a lot of competition throughout, not only the state, but the United States, with people representing the different trades and so forth. So kudos to Danville Community College, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yeah, I want to recognize the school superintendent. Harrison's here tonight with her police escort, Deputy Chief Dean Harrison. Thank you for coming tonight. You're going to be hearing a lot more from her and from council about the referendum coming up this fall for the one cent sales tax, not on medicines, not on food, but other sales, to help fund our capital improvements for our school system, which is desperately needed. We have $190 million of capital improvements we need to get done for our school system. So you're going to be hearing a lot more about that. Also recognize Tommy Bennett's here from the NAACP, and Stephen Gould in the back, he likes to hide, and I'm going to embarrass him, representing Caesars. Averit, big announcement last week, they've joined the Big South Athletic Conference. I mean, if you noticed Averit's schedule, they end up going to places in Alabama and Mississippi and far Tennessee. They're about to join a conference that's local, statewide, you know, Randolph-Macon, Bridgewater, Faram, Hampton-Sidney, schools that they play, but now are in their conference. So that's a big announcement for Averit. And Galileo's Scholastic team has won the regional, and they play on the 20th, which is, I guess, Saturday, for the state championship Scholastic. So that's an impressive bunch of youth there. And they had their track team was state champions, and also the track, we're going to hear, you know, we've been tossing around the new track for years, and I think it's back on track. We're going, we're working with the school board to make that a reality. So you'll be hearing more about our track for both Galileo and GW.
Thank you. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to say welcome to Dr. Harrison, glad you're here as well. And a special thanks to Vice Mayor Dr. Miller and Tommy Bennett, NAACP president, city manager, city employees, with regards to getting and helping people in our city and our region with the vaccine that's needed. Some questions, and I think it's important that people understand, the operation is under contract with the state. And the state chose Danville simply because of what Danville had done, had been doing, rather, on its own, on its own. So a lot of people having questions about who's in charge, what's going on. Yesterday was the first day, and like anything new, you're going to have to work out some bugs. I hear it went pretty well yesterday, 2,000 people, perhaps 2,000 people today. And I don't know, Mr. Manager, if the state, if you knew anything about it, I had heard, I was not there, that 300 or 400 people came, but they were not signed up. I don't know if the state allow, will allow its contractor to have, if they're there, to let them sign up while they're there. And I don't know if they can do that, but that would help and probably reduce some of the frustration. I do understand the day was just very, very, very smooth. So I'm just wondering if people, and people don't know, and they are showing up. I know nothing, Mr. Mayor, about whether it can cross the state line or not, I don't know. But when people come, as opposed to coming and, I don't want to say, well, not getting value for the trip that they made, I don't want to say wasting a trip, I don't want to say that at all. But if something can be done while they are there, at least to get on the portal, they will still need to wait their turn like everybody else. And, Mr. Mayor, I had heard, again, I don't know, that some city employees had gone through some neighborhoods in our city, people who didn't have, not have access to computers, and they were letting them use the city's computers to get them on the state portal. I think that is absolutely wonderful, another example of how our city manager looked with ways to make things work. And as you just heard him say, it's a state contract, okay? It's operated by the state. But he's been there Friday, he's been there today, trying to help out. And I think that says a lot for our city. And again, Danville was chosen because of what our city manager And again, Danville was chosen because of what our city manager was doing in the first place. So I hope that the state will allow us for people who come, didn't know they had to be in the portal, could not get in the portal, came early and waited two hours, but they weren't on the list, if the state could find some way for those who show up to at least get in the portal, as opposed to going back home and asking your nephew, or your cousin, or your grandchild, or your neighbor to help you out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Just also to note, thank you for mentioning that, Councilman Saunders. I got a call today, and Ken, it's kudos to you and Deputy City Manager from our fire department, and the chief is allowing the fire department to help register people, as you stated, door to door. So Ken, kudos to the department heads, and everybody's catching a vision, I yell at you, Ken.
Good questions, Councilman Saunders. They did yesterday, unfortunately, they did turn some people away that showed up without appointments. They've since changed the way they do things, they're trying to get, help people get registered, and in fact, and I don't want to encourage this too much, but I think people should really sign up first before they go up, because it is by appointment only. If they have the time, they could try to work one or two people in, and that's just to help folks, but I do not encourage people just to show up, because that just creates longer lines and more issues for people, but they are trying their best to accommodate. I've heard good reports based on that, and so I think they're trying to accommodate people. At the very least, encourage showing them how to register for a vaccine. There are appointments available, if people just go to the website, vaccinate.virginia.gov, and the number is 877-829-4682.
Repeat that number again, Ken, slowly.
It's 877-829-4682. It doesn't take long to register, you can get an appointment pretty close to right away if you're in the phase 1B, actually 1C now, because they open it up to 1C, which is a good majority of the people in Danville. And so if you go ahead and sign up, you'll likely get a slot very soon, go ahead and get vaccinated, and our community can get back to normal as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Councilman Saunders. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, first want to thank the city attorney for mentioning that about Lighthouse. It's always a great, great when a company comes here and not only hires people, but buys the building and owns the building that they're in, puts that back on the tax rolls. You know, another great company that came here and bought the building that they're in and is hiring people, PRA Group, right out there by the airport. This past Saturday, I had the chance to go by there with Delegate Glenn Davis from Virginia Beach. Of course, Delegate Davis had a pretty big hand in helping bring PRA Group here, and he and I got a chance to tour through the facility with Andre, who is the site leader over there. And I got to tell you, it was the first time, because of COVID and everything, I've had a chance to be back in that facility and really walk through it in about a year, and looking at it today compared to what it looked like before they went in there, it's like night and day. I mean, it is a gorgeous facility, they've got about 170 employees right now, and I was told that they're hiring more pretty frequently, so they're growing and a great company. Again, the facility, the site leader told me, he has worked at their facility in Norfolk, he's worked at their facility in Birmingham and at the one in Dallas, and now he's here. And he said, by far, this is the best facility that he's ever been in with PRA Group. And I asked him about the employees, and he couldn't, you know, say enough nice things about the people working there as well. They've had a great experience so far, and so it's good to see companies like that come here, buy the building, own the building, pay taxes, and hire folks. So, you know, we're happy to have them, as well as Lighthouse, that was mentioned earlier. As the mayor mentioned this morning, we had a pretty big announcement for our new baseball team, the Danville Otterbots, and I think anybody who has been on social media today has probably seen and heard a whole lot about that baseball team, and a wide range of opinions on the name, but I can tell you this, there have been more people talking about baseball in Danville today than have been in a long, long, long time. And so, and not just people here in Danville, by the way. Barstool Sports, which has millions of followers throughout the world, put on their website and on their Twitter feed earlier today that there is a new king in the clubhouse in terms of best mascot in baseball, and they said, here's the Danville Otterbots. So national outlets are talking about our baseball team now. So that can only be a good thing. That puts attention on our city and, of course, on the team as well. And I was told right before the meeting from Austin, the general manager, I believe they are almost 30 states now, people in 30 states have bought Danville Otter merchandise already today alone on the day that they announced. So people all over the country are buying hats and shirts and things that say Danville Otterbots on them. So that's pretty cool, in my opinion. So I'm looking forward to being out there at the ballpark this summer, and I tell you the way things are heading, folks keep getting the vaccine and everybody chipping in and doing what we're supposed to do, we're going to have a packed ballpark this summer, I believe that, and we're heading that way, and I'm excited about it, and I'm looking forward to it, and I'm glad to have them here as our new baseball team. Thank you.
You're not going to say anything about the song?
Well, I can neither confirm nor deny who was singing that song.
That's a different story.
And, Mr. Mayor, if you're not able, if you're lame and can't throw out the first pitch, I'll be glad to. I've been warming up.
This is Ray, if you see the video, we got to set this straight, if you see the video that came out today, right when the speech starts, a song comes on, it's not me singing the song.
Not me either. It's not me either.
So you'll see it if you see the video. Everybody's been called and said, what did I learn this song? It's not me singing the song. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
Mr. Whittle?
Sure, I couldn't be prouder of the JCPenney project that's fighting it right there out front, and we might have had a little cough yesterday, but go get your shot, let's get out of this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of folks have touched on a lot of things that are happening in our city, and I'm, for one, and I'm sure all of us are, very proud of where we're headed as a city, where we're headed as a city council, and the way that our community is spearheading a lot of things in our region. I've said it 100 times before, former Mayor Saunders, eyes are on us. You have said that since day one, people are watching us here in Danville. And there's one in particular I hope is watching. Councilman Vogler spoke about Barstool Sports. Dave Portnoy, we want you here to throw out that first pitch. Prez, we need you here. And we also have some really great pizza places, you'll know, if you know who Barstool Sports is, you know who Dave Portnoy is, you'll know that he's all about the pizza. So, Dave, we welcome you to Danville, come on and join us anytime. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
I've never been so proud of Danville and the citizens of Danville as they am right now, to see how we are working so closely together and dealing with a serious issue in our nation. If you have not taken the shot, you need to take the shot. If you, it's not just for you, but for the people who you're around. I'm so happy tonight to see Ms. Harrison here. I'm looking forward to our sit-down power in the future, and of course, to the NAACP, Tommy Bennett, and to our city manager. I'm just filled with joy to see what's going on in Danville. We have a very, very bright future. I'm glad to see that we're dealing with poverty, and Ms. Ross, PCCA, yes, it's a blessing to see how we're able to work together, and Danville's just moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Hood?
Yeah, I just want to pick up on, off of some of the stuff that everybody else said, but it's really awesome to sit here and to watch how the city is thriving and moving in a positive direction, but to be sitting here in this seat and to look around and see so many citizens that are looking forward to continue for the betterment of this city, it just shows how united that we can be and what we have to look forward to in store of this great city of Danville. It just brings me a lot of joy to see that, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Jones?
Ms. Ross, we have several Harristons here tonight. You came with Greg Harrison and Dean Harrison and Angela Harrison. Just want to thank you all for being here tonight, but also, Ms. Ross, you really touched me because with all the wonderful things going on in the city of Danville, to get 25 calls from families, they're saying that they don't have anywhere to live, they don't know where they're going to sleep at next, they don't know what they're going to eat next, and not knowing how many children are associated with those families, you really touched me with your presentation tonight. Can't thank you and your board for all that you all are doing. We hear all the time, some people say, well, there they go again, there they go asking for stuff again, there they go begging for stuff again. The reality is, everyone is not as blessed as the other, but if we put all our blessings together, we put out all our thoughts together, and we work together, we can help everyone to get to where they need to be, and that's what you all are doing, and I just want to say thank you all so much. On another note to hear tonight, from Councilman Vogler, PRA is hiring, City Attorney told us Lighthouse is hiring, Morgan Olson is hiring, we spoke today with a young lady that said his state is here hiring, and there's a lot of good things going on in our community, but as Councilman Vogler stated in his prayer, let's continue to pray for those who are less fortunate than ourselves, because with everything that's happening in our community, if each one don't reach one, we really not accomplishing anything. On that note, we are adjourned. I'll give us five minutes before we go into our work session, and City Attorney, could you make sure everything is shut off?